June 28, regular Board of Supervisor session.
All right, are we on online? All right, let's call this regular meeting.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Let's call this regular meeting of the main category supervisors to order. Mr. Grandia.
Keisha Johnner, here. Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Excused. Very good. Is there a motion for this morning's agenda? At least I'm gonna have to do a lot of seconding. I could actually, all right. Is there a motion for this morning's agenda?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good. Communications, Jake.
Nothing at all.
All right. Keisha. All right, I received nothing as well, so. Public comments is the portion of our agenda. The public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments on items not listed on the agenda? Nothing online? Anything in the room? Nothing in the room, we'll move on. Is there a motion for this morning's consent agenda?
Yeah, make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
All right, I will second that.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Onto business. All right. First agenda item is Resolution 2022-63, which is Budget Expense Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2023. Mr. Grandia.
So here we are, annual event before you on the last meeting in June. As you probably remember, lengthy process of going through the budget last March, starting in January, February, March, to approve a budget, do all those necessary steps, resolutions, publications, those types of things. This Thursday is the end of the fiscal year. It got here really quickly. So we are preparing the year-end stuff. Michaela and the Treasurer's Office are working towards that goal as well, and being able to roll FY23 in Friday or this weekend or sometime soon, and start FY23. To do that, we, there is a provision that even though there is an approved budget, everything, any expenses that were approved in the budget need to be appropriated. So this is the resolution asking to do that. We do it on our software. This is all expenses as approved by budget minus transfers. Transfers do not need to be appropriated. So example of that would be the transfer between the rural fund to the secondary road fund. It does not need to be appropriated. Anything else, this is 100% appropriation of the budget that was approved.
All right, very good. Any questions for Jake? Keisha?
I don't have any.
All right. You may as well. All right, is there a motion?
Yep. Make motion to approve Resolution 2022-63.
I'll second that.
Johnner.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Jake. Now we have Resolution 2022-62, which is Employee Mileage Reimbursement Rate. Jake, we had a change from the, what was it, 58? And change up to what, 60?
It's a four cent, I think. So historically, you know, that is.
62.5.
I don't mean to jump in, I think Lisa sent this out first.
Or Lisa's at yours, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. Historically, we have gone last several years. The board has looked at the IRS recommended rate for the last meeting in December, effective January 1. That was beneficial going from the, years back, we did look at it in July. But then it split a year and if, if the county reimbursement rate was less than IRS rate, we had employees trying to track that. They had to track the difference between what they were getting and not for taxes and those types of things. So we switched several years ago to a January 1 look at date for that. Last several years, you guys have followed the IRS rate. So in pattern here, the IRS has issued a increase in the reimbursement rate for mileage, up four cents to 62.5. So for a discussion point, if you guys want to take action or not, this is what's gonna be effective Jan, July 1, federal rate.
So Jake, a couple of things. I think I'd asked you to give us an estimate on what we've been reimbursing date or annually for employees. So do you have those numbers?
Well, I did a rough, just using the chart of account number, and I think it's an, this expense object to like 413 or something like that, that most departments would use when they code that back to their employees. And I think the total amount last fiscal was about $30,000 total countywide.
Okay, for reimbursement.
For reimbursement.
Now, that does not include our lease program we've got with Kim.
No, so, I mean, Kim's department.
I think Kim and auditor, or Kim and assessor have leased vehicles, right?
Yeah.
So they shouldn't be driving their, or Kim, do people still?
If they shouldn't be, I mean, occasionally, there is a reason that an employee might take their own vehicle, but not very often, they just know it's not approved, they have to get one of the vehicles. Our lease program ends in July. We're extending it three months to kind of see how things come out with the moving parts of the company.
Right.
But then believe it or the update, or we'll, we'll look at how we're gonna do that.
So Jake, when, with them doing this, we're highly volatile, fuel rates are highly volatile. And I, I've gotta think back to when I've done this in the past in the private sector. Once the IRS does this, they do not do mid-year shifts generally, correct?
Historically, no. It's once a year.
Okay.
So it's generally that July, or that January 1 start being effective for a whole year. So this was unusual, that they had made this change. I would assume, though, reevaluate in January, or 4 January again.
Yeah.
So, and as a board, I mean, you guys can, it's been good for us to have it the same rate as the, as this recommended rate, because then there isn't a gap.
Right.
But there are other counties that don't.
Yeah.
I mean, you, it's your, you can rescind or change at any point.
Well, I think I would ask, and Keisha, this is a question for you as well. Do we have any, I've never heard of an issue of county employees not using a county vehicle, doing this in excess. In other words, I don't see anybody taking advantage of this. One of the things the private sector, you always were aware of, is that people would, if you paid mileage, so let's say you're a claims adjuster. You go out, buy a real cheap car, they got really good gas mileage, and you pocketed the remainder. So you're always weighing those options on whether you should pay the federal rate or something less than the federal rate, or go to a lease program, which is why, that's not why we did it, but we thought we could save money with all the miles public health is putting on. I don't think we have any of those kind of concerns. There's none that I'm aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Managers?
Yeah, I mean, employees would turn into the department heads, and then the department heads would turn up to us. We do try to get documentation. Some, you know, turn in more often than others, and we can always strengthen on the documentation side of things too. But like, it's recommended if you go to a training. I went to summer school last summer, so I did term in mileage, and then, you know, I put a copy of the agenda and how many miles, that type of thing. So it's not, we don't have, especially now that like, public health is driving different vehicles, we don't have a lot of people that aren't in county vehicles that are using it every day, other than just bounce around in town. I mean, there's a few departments, but it's not like going to out-of-state every day or something like that.
Okay, all right. And again, I'm just, it's just stuff we have to think about, especially with volatility that is in the market right now, especially with fuel. I would ask that managers continue to monitor this very closely. Travel should be really for county business, and it should be for something that's material to the county, especially if this continues to go up. If we start seeing higher gas rates.
And I think if, even in the options of, you know, like, some of our meetings are offered in Zoom. I have meetings in Des Moines. I'm taking those, that option, because, so that you're not, you know, trying to keep that mileage down.
For us, the Auditor's affiliate, finally back to some in-person trainings. Secretary of State's using weekly team meetings and things like that. So yeah, people have learned through the pandemic to use those.
It's just a happy medium, yeah.
It's also been really good to get back in person a little bit, because then you can have that relationship again a little bit.
Yeah.
But also, you don't have to drive time, and you don't have to stay.
And I think it's different. Right, if this is your meeting, you know, once or twice a year versus, some of our meetings are once a month, you know, so yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. No, good discussion. I have no issues raising the, raising the mileage rate.
I hadn't heard from the other departments, but it was sent out as a topic, so.
Keisha, any?
Yeah, no, I don't have any concerns. I think that it does make it simpler for you guys when we follow the federal rate, so.
And if Joe Biden starts pumping oil and the rate comes down, we'll, we'll change the rate.
Yeah. You have the.
Or we'll stick windmills on everybody's car. Or solar panels.
Same, solar.
Yep. Come on, laugh, Michaela. It's fun. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make motion to approve Resolution 2022-62.
Oh, I'll second that.
I know, it's hard.
Wow, you totally had a.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
All right, very good. All right, we have a Class C liquor license with outdoor service renewal application from countryside wedding in advance. Jake, any issues with the app?
No, I don't know if they're online or not, I'm not sure. This is an annual renewal. Do you remember a couple weeks ago, we did a five-day for a vendor to hold an event at this countryside? Countryside ended up, they were switching their gram shop around, so that's why they kind of did that. Countryside ended up getting their gram shop changed and another old license as well. So they did continue to operate with that, and this is just the renewal. Nothing out of ordinary. I've received no negative comments from the other departments. They've done everything.
Okay, sure. Signed off and everything?
I, I believe, actually, we did get an email from Jason, typing.
Okay, Troy? You guys good? Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Keisha?
I don't have any problem with it.
All right, very good. Is there a motion?
Yep, make motion to approve the Class C liquor license for countryside wedding and events.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good. All right, we have an appointment. Pella Board of Adjustment to fill the term, it's a vacancy. Term is ending 5/1/2023. Larry Lautenbach is the, is that?
We're doing number four.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark Van Nord.
Van Nord, yep.
Mark Van Nord, sorry about that. Any, Keisha?
Yep, so recently, there's been a code change. The Iowa Code Section 414.23, with the one mile jurisdiction for publicity of planning and zoning and Board of Adjustment. Currently, what happens, the code change has required that those people, to serve on that board, you had to live within that, that extra, what do you call it? Jurisdictional, huh? Yeah, that's what, thank you Tyler, I appreciate that. I serve on that board as planning and zoning. After further review with the county attorney, we do believe that, you know, it, I live outside that one mile, so now this is the recommendation, Mark Van Nord to take, fill in that spot. Mark does live in the area. Mark has been a longtime builder all of his life. That's kind of what he's done, and I thought that it would be very beneficial, so.
So thanks, Keisha. So question, does, did the statutory change, so is this person the Board of Supervisor representative on that board?
Correct.
Is that what it does?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so it doesn't take our representation out? It just says if you don't live within that zone of?
Territorial, yeah.
Then you'd have to appoint somebody else?
Yes.
That lives within that extraterritorial jurisdiction?
And the code change has to be that one has to live within that area, and then if it's applicable, one has to have ag, use their ground as ag. So we are fulfilling both with planning and zoning, if we leave Terry Boss in, and then removing myself and making the recommendation of Mark Van Nord. That will fulfill that.
All right, very good, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve this appointment.
All right, I'll second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good, we have another appointment that I was skipping ahead to. Larry Lautenbach to fill vacancy on the Pella Board of Adjustment, term ending 5/1/2023.
Correct, so same thing, Larry would be filling the ag part of it for Board of Adjustments. Both Vince Nassaman and Marlin Rolfs, I can't, I don't, I don't wanna annihilate his last name, but I don't know, I'm not for sure. They both live within that, but one needs to, if it's, they can use their ground for ag, we need to fulfill that. So that is where Larry Lautenbach. So I would recommend Vince staying on, and then Larry taking the place of Marlin.
Okay, very good. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment.
I'll second.
Johnner.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. Very good, thank you. Thank you, Keisha.
Thank you.
Just to confirm, Keisha, that Vince is staying on?
Correct, yep, yep.
Thank you.
All right, very good, thank you. Next, we have a discussion for the City of Pella lease agreement for a driver's license space for 2022-2023. Michaela?
Yeah, so this is actually the exact same agreement that's been in place really since I took over. It moved the Pella driver's license station location from the memorial building to the community center. Rather than paying a rental rate, the City of Pella is willing to use that space that we can stay there permanently. We don't have to tear down, set up our stuff every week. We have the same room, we lock the door when we leave. And they're willing to give us that for a dollar a year. So my recommendation is that we can continue with that agreement. And I did send it to Ed, he reviewed it, said it looked exactly the same as it has in the past.
Okay. All right, good. Keisha, any questions?
I was just gonna ask, is it still being, you know, utilized a lot over there, or is it used to?
It is, it is. We've had to do some shifting, because initially, when we were in the memorial building, we had three driver's license stations that we were able to set up and tear down. The DOT has taken us down to one. However, looking at the numbers, we're not really serving fewer residents than we were before, because we leave the Knoxville station open. So before, if you came to Knoxville and you needed service that day, we turned you away. You would then drive over to Pella. That really created a bottleneck in our Pella office. So now that we leave Knoxville open, the benefit that we have for the Pella station is that we're really only serving Pella residents over there.
Do we keep track of customer count for our stations?
We do, yes.
Maybe sometime, Michaela, just an update on how many people use the Pella station? How many people are using the Knoxville station? Those are the two we had, right?
Yes, yep, and we have an audit with the DOT. They come down, do a review of our driver's license station, you know, let us know where we fall in the numbers every January.
Okay.
One of the DOT supervisors will come down and have that meeting with myself and my staff to give us feedback.
Okay, good. I'd just be interested to know, are we trending up, trending down? Where are we at?
We are trending up.
Trending up?
That I can confirm. Based on our review in January, we were given the feedback that our driver's license station is one of the most utilized in the state.
Really? So that would be, that would be interesting to kind of get a comparative then, to see, especially when you come and talk about the legislative changes, where they don't want to pay you for.
Right.
Thanks.
Correct.
So I think.
And that's definitely been an argument. Now, that's not counting the state stations. That's only taking into account the county driver's license stations.
Okay, okay, very good.
Why did they limit you then, and from one to, I mean, if we're, numbers are up?
The state is getting away from supporting the travel stations. We are actually one of the, I think there are only three remaining travel satellite stations in the state of Iowa. And we've been able to hold on to ours, because it really is, I think, a valuable service for us to be able to offer.
So what does that mean? The state is not supporting these state, going to strictly their own? State-supported ones? County courthouse ones? What are we, what are they doing? What does that mean? Tell me what that means.
They obviously are still supporting the county satellite stations that are located in the courthouses. But these travel stations, these ancillary stations, they've, they've kind of discouraged resources being devoted to those.
How much of that do they pay for?
I mean, cause, is the computer a lease thing, or what is, I mean?
It's all their equipment. It is not county-owned equipment, it is actually DOT-owned.
But we don't pay, we don't, we don't pay rental fees or charges on it, other than they don't reimburse you for much?
Correct. We, I do, I will file for a reimbursement for the internet that we're required to have over there to support the connection to the DOT. So we will get that back on them. But, you know, it, it does take whenever there are updates, which, again, when you're working with a software system from 2004, there are a lot of updates, a lot of enhancements, a lot of fixes that occur on a very regular basis. So when we have people come to the county offices, you know, to, to offer especially in-person support, but remote support as well, those are yet additional stations that they have to devote resources to.
18 years? 18 years?
So, so when we get, when we get really, really good broadband, that the governor's been promising, maybe this'll all get fixed. Or you can watch better Netflix. One of the two.
Yeah, we don't have time for Netflix.
Wow.
I gotta think about this one a little bit. Again, it's just the state of Iowa doing their best to be illogical. But thank you very much. And Keisha, want to make a motion to approve this agreement?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement, the City of Pella lease agreement for driver's license space.
Oh, I'll second that. Sorry, I'm still thinking. Our biggest community, we can't put a driver's license station there, but that's okay.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Amazing. Tyler. Just a second, I gotta get prepared. All right. Road Department base wage policy for the upcoming fiscal year. What do we got, Tyler?
So this is an annual approval of the base wages for our department. This, the base wage is for any new incoming employees, so any new hires for various positions would start, this would be their starting wage. And it also sets the, the difference between positions. So as we have internal promotions within our department, that is the raise that we will receive as part of operator two to operator three move, or to crew supervisor or whatnot, so.
What's the average increase across your lines? 5%?
Yep. There were some that did not change. Otherwise, the part-time and, and/or seasonal positions did not change from last year. All the full-time positions did change this year. It was 5%. There was no other changes. As I've done in the past, we created some separation between positions. There was none of that this year. It was simply 5% for full-time employees.
Okay. And then methodology, Tyler, we're using competitive analysis from a variety of counties? Our size, probably workforce development?
Correct.
Okay.
So every year, I run the numbers by position as a comparative analysis between counties. There is now a, similar to the Iowa County Engineers Association Service Bureau that runs its own salary survey. We have ISAC, but our, our service bureau breaks it down by position, because most road departments are structured similarly. There's also an Iowa Public Works Service Bureau now, or cities, so we can compare similar positions across all these states, cities as well.
Okay, very good. Keisha, questions?
No.
All right. Appreciate the work on this, Tyler, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this payroll policy?
Make motion to approve Resolution 2022-65.
I'll second that.
Johnner.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. And just so everybody understands, this is just job classifications. We're not increasing salaries for all the road department folks. This is for new hires. So it's increasing the classifications by 5%. Michaela, you back?
Yeah, I am.
You want to do this again? All right, public hearing is open. Proposed Marion County Ordinance 2022-2, admitting Chapter 51. This is about tax sale certificates. So, Michaela, what do we, what do we got for the public hearing?
So I have been approached by a couple of attorneys regarding a couple of properties in two different municipalities, and what the options are to to acquire either the deed or the tax certificate on those properties. The code was really unfair to me, and when I went out to other treasurer's offices to try and receive clarification, I got a lot of different answers back. So I visited with our county attorney's office and requested that they really take a look at the code. Chapter 446 is specifically what addresses the ability of municipalities to acquire tax sale certificates on properties within their jurisdiction. So this was assigned to Joy, and she is supposed to be on the meeting, I think, here in a minute. She texted me. If she's still speaking to me after all of this.
Did you have lots of questions? Cause I can see where this would be, yeah.
So basically, what we determined from the code is that Marion County was required to have an ordinance in order to be able to use this part of the code to do what we want to do.
So what are we, what, I guess, before Joy gets on, Michaela, what are we trying to accomplish through the changes? What's the goal of the change?
What we are trying to accomplish is to allow municipalities to acquire the tax sale certificate. In the past, when I have brought a tax sale certificate to you guys to be assigned, typically it's to a private party, and it's almost always to an adjoining landowner, because there's either unknown or unclear ownership. The parcel is landlocked, it's really unusable independently, and really it's only the adjoining landowner that either kind of already has an existing claim on the property or can use it.
So this goes to our Hamilton, our Hamilton question? Or this doesn't relate to the Hamilton?
The Hamilton parcel is different.
Okay.
That's a, that's a different animal.
It's a different animal.
We already have the deed.
So we got that, okay. So this is a different, this is a different, this is a different question than to that, okay?
Yes. So, and the properties that I have brought to the board in the past, those are all out in the county. Those are all in townships. These are properties that are within city limits. So I feel that it is to our, rather than do the sealed bid process as we have in the past, it's to our benefit and to the city's benefit for them to be able to take over this property, this tax sale certificate.
So the goal would be that this would make it easier for a municipality to take on this type of a property? And then they dispense with it as they see fit?
Yes.
They go through the bidding process or whatever?
Yes, rather than.
We step out of that role?
Yes, rather than the county having that responsibility, that's now an answer for the city.
Any issues with that, that, I mean, from a procedural standpoint? I mean, is this done, other, other counties are doing this and stepping out of that rule?
Okay, great. Okay, and Joy should be here in a minute.
Okay.
So, yes, although my goal was to lock down the procedure and make sure that if we are going to use this going forward, that we're doing so according to Iowa code.
Okay.
And that's the part that was unclear to me, that process.
Yeah, and the only thing I ask, and maybe Joy, is Joy on?
There's an Eddie on, I think, with the same.
Well, Joy will be, she will, yes, she will help clarify this ordinance. So she will help me with.
Michaela, I just have a question while we're waiting. Joy, so if this were to go back to the, the cities, then they would have the jurisdiction to be able to say whether, I mean, whether they want to keep it, or they're gonna put it back on the tax? Or, I mean, I'm a little lost in what.
Typically, the goal is to get it cleaned up, rehabbed, and back on the tax bills.
Okay.
These are properties that have been determined abandoned.
So once they meet that qualification, we're stepping out of that role? The city can step in, or the municipality, whatever that is. So once they meet that qualification, we're stepping out of that role. The city can step in or the municipality, whatever that is. I assume this could apply to a township too. All the townships probably don't do this, right?
No, no.
Haven't had a township do this, but.
It's not out of the question when you think about.
The township had the funds, yeah, to be able to.
But, but what we're doing, I guess my, my ultimate question is, if it's a case of first impressions, so like we're stepping into a place where we're the first ones to try this? Where traditionally counties have been the ones to do this, do we have any risk? Where we do this and, and landowners, so a city takes on the property and then they dispose of it. We're out of the process. We're not controlling the process. But then the adjacent landowners come back and say, well, you tried a novel approach. That's not how it's normally done. Make them port to Iowa code, but we think there was other issues and we wanted to go to the county.
Right. And this is not a new invention.
Okay.
Other, other cities have used this and.
Just don't wanna be not, I don't wanna be out of the gate with stuff like this where we're creating, creating uh precedents.
Yes, no, we, we are not doing that. However, we are making certain that we are following the process, take out by the code.
I think it's fine. I think it lessens your workload, Michaela, and the complexity and it's a good thing.
And to speak to risk, I guess my counter would be, I feel this lessens the county's risk.
Okay.
Because the city is assuming the risk of executing that tax sale deed.
What if they don't wanna do it?
Yeah, that's the, that was the question I was gonna say. Do they have the manpower? Do they have?
What if they say, I don't really want to? I agree that you got the ordinance, but we don't have the capabilities, because Keisha's right, what if they don't?
And there are probably several properties that cities could use this ordinance to do this exact process with and they choose not to. So absolutely, that's an option.
Do they default on us? Yeah, does it, they come to us and say, well, we don't have that. We have the capability, but we want your help.
I think that's a discussion we have to have on a case-by-case basis.
That would, that'd be different to the way it is right now?
I ju- yeah, I just was wondering.
I, I, as long as it's provided for.
Yeah.
See, if you, it's, cause if you draft an ordinance that says that if it's within your municipal boundaries, you take it and we're out, that municipal ba- uh, entity says, we don't wanna do it, does it automatically, by ordinance, come back to us? Or is it a gray area now? We're just kinda sitting out there and everybody's flipping a coin to say who takes it?
In my opinion, I don't think a city would invest the resources to have their attorneys follow the process without having a specific hand gain. Without the intention of having that property cleaned up and put down on the tax.
I guess what I'm seeing, Michaela, they don't even get that far. City just comes, we're not gonna invest any resources. You do it, cause we don't have the capability to do it.
Then again, that's a case by case. That becomes a discussion that we need to have.
Okay.
Whether it's a property that's worth it to do that or not.
Okay.
If this were then, um, communicating to the cities that they can, you know, that if, if we were to pass this, um, to make sure that they fully understand. I mean, is there gonna be a follow-through process because that this opportunity? Cause it seems like maybe some cities are, you know, fully aware, you know, maybe the bigger ones, but we have some smaller ones like Harvey or whatever. Um, you know, making sure that they fully understand what this does. So.
And looking at the tax rolls of our larger municipalities, we don't have a lot of properties that would really fall under this.
Okay.
Or Naxa Lantala. So, but one thing I found is that we actually already had an ordinance in place for this. And when Joy renewed our ordinance, her determin- determination was that it was actually very poorly written. Um, there are two sections under four forty-six, four forty-six nineteen A and four forty-six nineteen B. Those were combined in the ordinance that we had in Marion County. So she went through and she separated those. So that's what we're being asked to do with this item.
Yeah, I, I think, I appreciate the, the clarification, Michaela, on this and we can give her, I think it's a good, a good clarification. We can see what the exceptions are if ever they arise. Any other public questions? This is the public comment portion. Keisha and I have been doing all the commenting. Hearing none. Entertained motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I can hear now. Do we need to, oh, second. I'll second that motion. I thought I did.
I might not have just heard.
No.
Might be imagining I did.
I was writing down the times.
Okay.
Alright, so, um, Raimi.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Now, twenty twenty-two dash two, first reading. Keisha, any questions? Anything you wanna?
Do I ever come on?
I, I think so, yes.
You have a question for Joy?
Well, I just was, I mean, when reading this, cause we've, you know, we've crossed out some, then ultimately, I mean, I get it to show us what you guys, what has been eliminated and what has not, um, just making sure the cleaned up version, I was wondering what it fully looked like. But I guess this is what we, is this what we, Joy, is this how we will adopt that, even with it striked out?
The strikeout shows, um, what had, what was originally there.
Correct, yeah.
And what will be replaced. So that is typically how I write uh any proposed bills or let, any kind of legislation. So when it's, um, I can, I can do a cleaned up version for you if you'd like to have that. I can do that really quickly, so you'd have it right now.
Well, we don't, I mean, I just was thinking, what is published in the cleanup version or is this what we signed?
Clean version is published.
Yep, yep, okay.
It'll be a clean version that's in your ordinance book and then available on the website.
But we keep, but we keep the red line version for records.
Sure.
Just to know where we change, right?
Okay. That would be my only question. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, is there a motion on the first reading?
Yep. Make motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two.
First reading.
First reading, sorry.
Second.
Raimi.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two dash two to waive second and third reading and publish.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
John.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Raimi. Sorry. I apologize.
That's alright. That's alright, Jay. We're on our, we're on our game today, I tell you what. Alright.
I haven't seen you. It throws me off.
I know it. I know it. Alright. Next item, uh, we have a request from Melcher, Dallas to use Marion County ordinance chapter fifty-one to acquire a tax sale and parcel numbers listed. Is it up there on the board? It is up on the board. Michaela?
Okay, so to kind of pull this all together, um, this is really kind of the first parcel and question that, um, I was approaching.
For this, for this ordinance, huh?
Yes.
Timely.
To use this ordinance for. So this particular property, uh, again, to summarize what I said earlier, typically when I bring a county held tax sale to the board to be assigned, um, it's normally to a private party. It's a parcel of unknown or unclear ownership. It's not usable to anybody but, um, an adjoining landowner who really may have already stayed to claim on it. And this particular parcel is different. Um, this particular parcel is standalone. It's buildable. Um, it's one that could be, that should be offered outside of adjoining landowners. Um, so that's what actually prompted this entire process. And I believe Mr. Fishman is on. Okay, because he has actually used this in other jurisdictions to, uh, accomplish the same process. To acquire the county held tax sale on a property and then to have a tax sale be executed. So.
Okay, and who is Mr. Fishman?
He is the attorney for the city of Melcher, Dallas.
Okay. Welcome this morning.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's sorry for causing all this trouble for you guys.
No, no worries, no worries. Okay, so, Michaela, you have no issues then exercising our newly approved ordinance for this?
I, I do not. In fact, this is where, um, again, I support taking the responsibility of the future of this parcel out of the county's hands and putting it in the hands of the city. I feel like, um, they would definitely have this parcel's best intentions and be able to make the best decisions going forward.
I love the approach because we've done that even with our, in other projects, we've supported what the cities want to do within their, even with the VA. We want Knoxville to have a, a say in what happens with that, even though it's county owned. So I think that's a great idea and a great approach, Michaela. Keisha, any?
I don't have any problems. No, no.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Is there a, you need a motion to approve this, Michaela?
Jake, that.
Or can we just use the ordinance?
Um, the ordinance, um, will be in play once we, um, publish, uh, with the changes. So, um, this is the request. Um, would it be a recommendation to have a resolution, uh, at the next meeting to go ahead and proceed with this? Maybe to tie.
Maybe you gotta, if you gotta get your publication dates to sing.
This was a good discussion point and see if there was any other issues that Michaela needed to step through or anything like that. I think so.
Okay.
Um, uh, maybe some unofficial requests. Uh, uh, Mr. Fishman is, uh, available for that as well. At the next board meeting in July, um, after the ordinance has been published, we'll bring it back with a.
Sounds good.
But somebody will draft a resolution or something of that nature.
Okay.
And I can do that.
Yep.
It sounds perfect. Alright. Is there a motion to close discussion?
Yep. Make motion to close discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Raimi.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Very good. Mr. Nestavee, I hear the VA's coming down.
Yeah, we started demo last week.
We did. Alright. Very good. Where are we at?
Uh, tomorrow, I do my final walk through and Vite officially leaves Knoxville and Marion County on Thursday morning.
Okay.
Uh, ten months, twenty-four days.
Very good.
That'll be seated down and, uh, obviously if you've driven by lately, there's mulch going down to help protect the seating, so.
Okay.
Yeah, final walk through is tomorrow.
That's excellent. So I know we're, we're, now that we're to that point, I know Keisha's asked for this. We talked about this in our last meeting as well. Uh, will we have any kind of final financial, um, kind of know where we're at in terms of our bond? What do we need out of general fund, if any? Where are we at? Will we have that for?
So my plan is for our next, uh, board meeting to actually have an agenda item where we have the breakdown of the entire project. Uh, there are literally just two things. I'm still waiting for to have those complete numbers and we can do ballpark figures right now. But I think it'd be ideal to present the, the actual numbers.
We could do that where it's kind of something that we have for the public to see. That would be cool.
Yeah, we're waiting for basically June's final landfill payment, uh, which we had about a third of the trucks we typically would have um, in a month-to-month basis. I think we had, uh, two hundred and twenty-four truck loads and I think there's one left today.
Oh, wow.
So, uh, when I get June landfill tickets, um, earthworks came in, I, I can tell you, I, they did actually send me last night their, uh, their change order amount. Um, going into this, we had budgeted about ten percent on overall project for change orders. Uh, earthworks with all the duck bank, they did us a very, uh, a wonderful solid, uh, about twenty-eight thousand.
Oh, wow.
Is all they charged us for that. Uh, they were actually able to make up some machine hours, uh, by doing some other things.
Excellent. So we kind of final, and those are pretty large ticket items we need to have to get the right, the right numbers. Okay, good. So maybe for the next meeting, let's make it an agenda item.
Perfect.
And if you could, if you wouldn't mind having something that we could.
Absolutely.
Publish for everybody so they can see the final numbers, as final, final as they are.
Yep.
And then we can go from there. That sound good? Anything else?
I'm good. I'm happy.
I will, I will ask this regarding the fence. So is the temporary fencing on that side, will that come down with them, with Vite?
So that is, uh, Vite rented that.
Okay.
So that's not county purchased or county rented. Uh, so Vite will have to return that fence on the south side.
Okay.
Now, the fence that the county put in place, uh, for this project to begin, my recommendation would be to keep that fence in place. Uh, because once again, we, we went from an active demo site. Our hopes are we move into an active construction site.
Correct.
So I, I believe our, our fence should stay in place.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that at all personally. That's right. Okay. Well, and, but we don't, but we don't have a fence around that, that, uh, the old doctor's quarter site.
Correct.
Other than that temporary fence.
There's, there's actually a fence, uh, fence on the east side. There's a fence on the south side of that property that was there, but we inherited from the VA. Uh, there's no fence on the west pleasant side or the west side along Willets.
Any concerns that we need to be aware of?
None.
Once they, once they grade all that, fill in everything?
There'll be really no hazard. Uh, in, in all honesty, there'd be no hazard that I could see on the, the north side other than the fact that we did retain the water tower and we did retain the logger building.
That, that's almost too big an area there that we, we just need to, and if seeding it down, it's not a recreational area. It's not intended to be that.
The ground needs to settle as it can. We don't want, you know.
I just don't want any hazards on that other side that maybe.
No, it's, it's a final graded site. Um, it'll be seeded as well, but I just don't see any reason to, for us to purchase fencing. Cause that's, that's ultimately what we're talking about. Would we have to take over the lease on the fencing that's currently there or would we have to purchase fencing? I don't see a reason for it on that small parcel on the south.
Okay, good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Keisha?
Nope.
Alright, so next, uh, next time we'll go through numbers.
Excellent.
I'll look forward to it.
Me too.
Alright, very good. Thank you, Chris. Is there a motion to close discussion?
Yep, make motion to close discussion on the VA project.
Second.
Raimi.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Updates. Keisha?
Um, did my last planning and zoning, uh, yesterday and, uh, I don't have any other meetings this week, so that's it.
Okay, we are still working on, um, mental health. Uh, we don't have a meeting coming up till, I think, yeah, Rachel's not here. You wouldn't happen to know, by end of the month, we, we usually have those. But going through the transition, continuing to work on, how the region will be structured going forward. Uh, again, remember the state made a lot of changes, uh, to mental health. So from finances to personnel, uh, we are still working out those, those structural and operational issues. Rachel's doing a great job working with Kim and then our, our other county partners on that piece.
July nineteenth.
Is it July nineteenth? Thank you. Uh, is the next meeting on that. We've got a board of health meeting tonight. Thank you, Kim. It's at five o'clock. Hold on. I have a board of health meeting tonight at five o'clock. So we, uh, again, lots of issues there to talk about. We're waiting to see what, uh, Kim has done, an appeal uh, for WIC. Kim, anything you wanna add to that?
That, uh, we are in, we are in competitive season. Oh, I'm sorry. We are in competitive season for our major programs and, um, the state's changed the structure of how that all is put together. And so we were not awarded our track. Um, and so we have appealed that decision and so we'll see what that goes. Um, otherwise the applications are in for all of the other, um, large contracts that we have and we'll just have to see what happens.
Right. Very good. And then, uh, I know we, I had some meetings with Knoxville on the VA and Chris and I had a meeting last week with, uh, Representative Brooke Bowden, uh, on that to talk about adjustments and changes to development to the site. We'll do that probably in concert with Chris's review of numbers. We'll have maybe some folks from Knoxville here to talk about the engineering that comes out of that as well. Still going to be primarily a workforce housing site, but because of some engineering issues, we may have to do some modifications so that we can make the best use out of that property, uh, going forward. But, uh, but I want Knoxville here to talk about that to, to be fair. And they've got all the details on that. Other than that? And I know we're doing Prairie Ridge stuff too, right?
Yep, um, so I'm going to do a monthly update, so I'll do it the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yep, yep, so.
Perfect. Very good. Thank you. Uh, I think that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second. We're failing in my job here, Jake. You had a good saving, man. Aye.
John.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you.